Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Joy, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revelensky?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Counsel, any changes or additions to the Stevens' agenda?
Just like to add a very brief Blue Zones project update.
Put that under our committee reports. Then we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the September 8th and September 17th special council meeting. And we have a resolution for employment for Park and Rec Department, approval of liquor licenses for First Friday's Art Walk and the Cider House, and approval of claims in the amount of $338,455.60. Any questions regarding those consent agenda items?
I do have a question about liquor license for First Friday Art Walk.
October Fest?
October Fest, that is. Any other questions? Entertained a motion to approve?
So moved?
Moved by Flornoy.
Second.
Seconded by Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Revelensky?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Next counsel, our peers before the council, we have Lori Abigat, our customer relations representative with Alliance Energy, and she has an annual report for us.
I do.
Hi Lori.
Hi, how are you?
Good evening, everyone.
I trust that you have my report in your packets?
No.
No? You do not. I think I sent it to you Friday.
Too late.
Did you send it to me? I sent it to you. I wasn't here. I was going to meet Friday. Oh, okay, okay. Well, you have it in your email. Rebecca didn't have it. You have it in your email. Yep, okay. So now you're just going to have to bear with me and listen to me. Sorry. I'm here every year to kind of give you an update of the previous years, our partnerships as far as rebates, economic development, Chamber of Commerce, corporate contributions, and our other things that we partner, like branching out and that type of thing. So I'm just going to kind of go through the -- can you hear me okay?
Sure.
I'm going to go through the list, and stop me, feel free to ask questions along the way. As far as economic development support, and again, this is all based on 2013 numbers, we gave $1,000 to FIDA. We also support the Location One, which is a site selection program, as well as the Synchronist program, which goes out and interviews existing industry on, you know, possible retention and expansion opportunities. So we partner with FIDA and all of our other development groups, nonprofit groups, to help them try to attract industry and also retain the existing industry. As far as community support, it's like we've given the community $5,525, and that's supporting your annual Chamber of Commerce, as well as various events and programs through local contributions, which are typically 501(c)(3), (c)(6) organizations. They send an application to us, and we review it. This is at the local level, like within our zone. We also have an Alliance Energy Foundation, so that $5,500 incorporates all of those entities. As far as environmental partnership, we have participated at the level of $5,655 through our local, your local Trees Forever program. So that was something that's called, it's called our branching out program. So that was $5,600 with that. Energy efficiency partnerships and impacts of 2013, over 500 rebates were applied for, $662,000 was paid out of those rebates. Kilowatt hour reduction was over 3 million kilowatt hour reduction, so that's very impressive. In regards to thermes, which is gas reduction, there was over 74,000 thermes that were reduced, and this is again in the 2013 timeframe. If you remember, 2012 were big numbers because we were kind of finishing up the Home Time Rewards program, and so those numbers were very large, but as you can see, people are still participating, you know, they're understanding what you did through that. Home Time Rewards was very impactful for your community because they're still, they're still going after some of these incidents.
There were a lot of solar rebates.
There were solar rebates, yes. That's correct.
Those will continue this year, but
Right.
Once, after 2014, those are no longer
That's correct.
Part of the program.
That's correct, yes. As far as community infrastructure investments, this is what Alliance Energy has invested in your electrical system in the community, over $236,000, and in your natural gas infrastructure investment was almost $80,000. As far as taxes in 2013
Lori, can I stop you there also?
Yes.
Is that a, is that a present value for the entire system, or is that?
Those are mostly rebuilds, upgrades.
So those are recent numbers based on activity?
Right, just in the 2000 timeframe, 2013 timeframe, yes.
Thank you.
And, you know, like I said, those are life extension projects, you know, they're all mandated by the Utility Board. Obviously, they come out, look at our system, tell us what needs to be upgraded, and then those are investments that we make on your behalf, so as part of our franchise agreement. The county taxes that we pay for gas and electric, $264,000, and in Jefferson County alone, $350,000. And as you know, we employ, we have an operating facility right here in Fairfield. We employ 14 people from Fairfield and the surrounding areas. So that's kind of what my report consists of, but we can certainly talk about whatever you'd like.
Lori, any update on Alliance plans to institute smart meters?
That is still a ways off. There's a, there's a test currently in our Wisconsin area. They're doing a test with smart meters. It doesn't appear to be any time in the next, you know, few years before we'll institute that in, in our service territory. You know, part of this, we have to upgrade our entire data billing system, and it's multi-millions of dollars to do that because we, we're still working in DOS, believe it or not. It's like, you know, press any key to continue and you're locked out. It's ridiculous. So that's something that our company is taking a strong look at, is updating that system so it can be more, you know, obviously if you have a meter that can be read, you know, remotely, there's less chance of operator error, obviously, then you're, you have less overhead with meter readers going out and reading meters and accidents and vehicles, et cetera. So, so those are all the pros. The cons are that we have to upgrade this whole, this whole system in order to even implement that, so.
Okay. And there's also the public's backlash, the controversy over the radio frequency impact on health. Expect that from this community if it's announced, so if there's any alternatives or workarounds and we should be working on them now, then that's, that's something that we really should be, should be discussing.
And, you know, I think we've talked about this in the past, and I know that there are some opt-out opportunities. I don't know to what level, I'm not, that's way above my pay grade, so, but I certainly will pass.
Okay, yeah, if there's any, if there's any hard information on that, we'd love to see that.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Great. Counsel, any questions for Lori at this time? Great. We appreciate your support.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Let me know if you didn't get that, Joy. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Next, Adam Plagie from FIDA will present a CDPG housing grant report.
Good evening. FIDA's been working in tandem with the Housing Task Force the last few months to formulate some recommendations on new housing development and existing housing rehab. And a couple of weeks ago, we attended a CDPG Housing Summit and Water Summit. Darren was there as well. And one of the opportunities that was identified was the Sustainable Housing CDPG Grant, and I do believe there's some information on your packet. I'm just going to present some additional ones, but that's fine, I can just quickly go through it. This one is time-sensitive, so I wanted to approach the council with this prior to coming up with the rest of the recommendations from the Housing Task Force. The Sustainable Housing CDPG Grant is up to $500,000. That would be used to restore between 10 and 20 homes in Fairfield within a target residential neighborhood, primarily targeting low to moderate income families. So the neighborhood that we'd be looking to identify would be one that meets some qualifiers. The application is due December 8th, and to get that application in on time, we would need to start work on this fairly quickly. So each homeowner that would be awarded the grant would get up to $25,000 to rehab their home. That's in the form of a five-year forgivable loan. And the application steps would essentially be identifying the CDPG grant administrator. Traditionally, Area 15 has done this for us. I believe Fairfield did one about five or eight years ago between that. Pathfinders might also have the capability to administer the CDPG grant. Not positive on that, you haven't waited to hear back from IEDA. The next step, we targeted neighborhoods, so I'd encourage all of the city council members to reach out to homeowners in your ward, particularly neighborhoods you might think that would qualify. I do have some information on what neighborhoods would qualify, I'll send that to you after the meeting, but essentially, we need to be looking at neighborhoods in which the majority of homeowners are within 80% or lower of the median household income. So that's a fairly high figure, about $56,000. So a good portion of Fairfield would qualify under that. And if you look back at the housing needs assessments, one requirement for this grant is to have a impact, a windshield survey, which was that big brightly colored map, which you probably looked at your house and said, "Really? My house is rated this?" Well, it's not a scientific study, but it does identify which neighborhoods may need a little more TLC than other neighborhoods. So looking at that map, we're looking at probably the northwest quadrant of town might be a selected, a good neighborhood, somewhere along in there. Once the neighborhood's identified, we need to do an income survey of that neighborhood and then solicit homeowners for pre-applications. So again, we'd be looking to get about 15, 20 pre-applications. This doesn't commit them to it, but it does make sure that they qualify and that they would be interested in pursuing that. The other final piece of the puzzle is to designate the local matching funds portion of this. That's a fairly small component. You do not, the grant does not require a local match, but on average, there's about a $30,000 local match for successful applications. So there's three options here. We could have a homeowner contribution, so since they're getting a five-year forgivable loan, they're essentially getting up to $25,000 that they'll never have to repay. So hopefully, if they have the ability, they could get a loan or contribute $1,000 out of that rehab. There's also the opportunity to designate some of the SRF funds for infrastructure improvements in that targeted neighborhood. So I think we can work with Melanie and see what neighborhoods might have upcoming projects that would qualify under that. And a third option would be just to have a city contribution of between $0 to $30,000 to meet that local match. So the bigger the local match, the more likely we are to get the grant, but it seems to be a pretty great opportunity while we're looking at housing-related issues. Love to be able to assist in any way possible and work with Area 15 or Pathfinders in getting the application in and approved and working on any other issues related to this that need to be. So I don't think we need any formal action tonight, but
Adam, talk a little bit about one of the recommendations that's coming out of your task force for housing rehabilitation. As a little bit of background justification for going this direction.
Sure. Doing a little bit of research on peer communities, what homes are assessed at in terms of value in Fairfield compared to cities like Clear Lake or Fairfield and Pella, not Fairfield obviously, but Pella, or wherever else rural communities within 8, 10, 15,000. And our median assessed value is fairly low. We're at about 85,000. If you look at a community like Pella, they're at about 140,000. Clear Lake's even higher than that. So I think there is some concern that some of our homes do need some TLC. We have older homes than our, some of our peer communities, there hasn't been a lot of development the last year. I believe there's somewhere between eight and 10 housing starts the last couple of years. So there's a need for new development, but there's also a need to rehab our existing homes, and of course, you know, some people do have restricted incomes, and this is one of the better opportunities than to offer their ability to do that rehab that's needed as opposed to going after them in a, an inspection manner. But Fairfield also only does housing inspections, rental inspections once every four years as well. So that may be one recommendation that comes out of the Housing Task Force as well, is to look at, you know, carrot and a stick, what can we both do to help people rehab their homes, whether that's the Regional Housing Trust Fund, which is operated out of Area 15 in Otomo, whether that's working with Habitat for Humanity with Brush for Kindness, and what enforcement needs to be taken place when we're not getting the needed repairs done, whether that's the water being turned off, or a hole in the roof, or rodent infestation.
Now, this program is going to be targeted at single-family homes, owner-occupied.
Owner-occupied homes.
Okay.
That meet the median income threshold requirement, like 80%.
Because that's how the previous program worked with us, and I think it was Area 15 that did the oversight on, on that. They also offered a specialist in that area that came in and verified all the work that went along with it, so.
Surf Z out of Burlington, most likely, which is their cog down there, bringing in a specialist to work on that.
Yeah, the program, program worked well. We, you know, absolutely, we had enough participation, I think we had to turn some folks away. Yeah, it was tremendous for our community. If we would qualify again, it would be worth a shot. Adam, at this point in time, since we're kind of in between our full-time city administrators, as we're wondering whether, is that, as far as getting to the grant, is that something that you're going to help us?
Absolutely. We're not able to administer the grant, but we'll certainly work
To the application.
Area 15 and coordinating the income surveys and working with the city council or whatever subcommittee on identifying the target neighborhood and going through that process.
We wouldn't know about the award likely until first quarter of next year.
Yeah, I think the award date is in May.
Okay.
March.
Okay, so that would, that would certainly give us enough time. So, any council comments?
I just want to comment that FIDA, Adam and Anna have been just instrumental in keeping our Housing Task Force moving along, bringing really valuable research and information so that we can make recommendations back to the council. So those will be coming soon, probably late October, November, after we have our third meeting, but it's, they've been, they've been invaluable in that, so.
Great, thanks. So as far as, I know your concern is timeline, December 8th. Do we, we want to ask ways and means to kind of consider at their next meeting how the city would participate for its portion, come back with a recommendation, and simultaneously, you'll get some information from us from both Area 15 and Pathfinders about grant administrations, that we would make a decision on that as well. And I mean, is two months going to leave us enough time to?
We really do need to probably start work, either some preliminary work probably in the next two weeks, so I would like to, I guess, get some guidance on whether I should, I've already approached Area 15 and got some information since they did the last one for us.
Okay.
We'd like to move forward with working with them, or if there's preference to contact Pathfinders who may be able to administrate the grant as well.
Okay, and I suppose, you know, that, that decision about how we, how the city would participate can come at a certain point before the application is done.
Right. Within the next 30 to 60 days.
If we don't come to an agreement, we can drop the whole thing. So that's fine. So counsel, if you'd be willing to authorize, so these initial steps for the income surveys and whatever else we, we need to get done as quickly as possible, because we will not meet as a council again for another three weeks.
So the authorization would be to actually engage Area 15 or Pathfinders? Is that, is that what you're looking, because they're going to, whoever we engage will be the ones to do the income surveys and all that, right?
Correct.
So I'd make a motion to, can you, I mean, do we have, are both feasible, you know, candidates for this, or?
I did speak to IEDA about a week and a half ago, and all I can say is that they traditionally lean on the COGS, which would be Area 15, to do these. Some private entities are authorized to do that. I did contact Detra, Detra, and she said, "We have administered CDPG grants before," but I think it's been a very long time since it's been a housing one. So there may be a preference for IEDA to use Area 15, but I can certainly research it more if there's a preference.
Well, I don't have anything against Area 15, and as we said, they, they did a good job last time for us. So I'd move that we go ahead with Area 15 if everyone wants to, otherwise, we, I mean, we can, since time is sort of an issue here.
I think that's fine. Yeah, I think that's, that's a good suggestion.
So a resolution to engage Area 15 and pursue this grant?
Yeah, and great. And if you have any feedback on target neighborhoods, you have explicit interest from certain neighborhoods in your ward, please let me know, and we'll do some additional research to see if they would qualify.
Thanks, Adam. So, motion by Revelensky?
Second.
Seconded by Ledger Kalin. Any other discussion? Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, Adam. Okay, next counsel, we move to our action items. First, we'll have a resolution accepting our Second Street paving project as final. Melanie, if you can give us a synopsis of the project?
Sorry, I was writing notes about the CDPG. Okay, Second Street from Burlington to Madison was completed very quickly. I think it hadn't started at our last council meeting, so they, they got that done. A few of the punch list items involving a few low spots were repaired, so to the best of our knowledge, it's complete. We would recommend that you accept the project as final. The final amount comes to $109,417.26. So the retainage of around $5,500 would be paid 31 days from now, as long as there are no claims.
Okay, thank you, Melanie. Entertained a motion to accept the project as final?
Move to accept.
Moved by Hamilton, seconded by Rasmussen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Next, we have an action item regarding the easements from Interstate Power and Light Company, our overhangs, and
Bradley John.
What's that, John? Do you have our agreement?
I'm a slow learner. What you have is four easements that are all basically the same easement, and their locations in the community where Interstate Power and Light wants a permanent easement that reflects understandings that we've just negotiated. Basically, this is so that below the overhang, which is usually a projection of a perpendicular to a pole with anything that has to do with electric transmissions, it can be transformers, it can be basically insulated. Additional parts run their wires through our, basically through our business district area. They would like us to agree to the terms of these easements on a perpetual basis with a bunch of caveats that they, they have subjected themselves to basically our prior restraint on some things. For instance, clearing vegetation and so forth. What they want us to do is things that I think were probably already somewhat required to do as far as being in compliance with National Electrical Transmission Safety Codes. We're not supposed to be closer than a certain number of feet to their transmission equipment anyway, but we have had them reserve a prior reasonable notice to us if they're going to be in the vicinity. If they're going to be trimming growth, or taking trees, or trimming trees and so forth, we want either the prior approval of our Park and Rec Department, or our Public Works Department as far as what they're going to do. We've had some controversies about this in the past, where trees ended up becoming hedges instead of pyramidal trees as a result of our company random cutting. So that kind of thing is built in here. On each of the paragraphs where the grantor is agreeing to do something, it's either subject to prior reasonable notice, subject to prior review, subject to prior mutual written approval, and essentially, that's because we had a back and forth with them for the last three weeks about what would be acceptable to us as far as the city's interest. Hopefully, you agree with me with those phrases that have been added to it, is their boilerplate language. I'm urging you to adopt this with the revisions that are now in there at the back end of each of these grant or paragraphs. And as I say, this, this is intended to be a permanent easement, at least until their code changes or they want something different, but I think it's sort of a necessity at the same time that we still have some say on this. If there was something that you do disagree in what the format is for these easements, you know, tell me tonight, I'll take it back to them again. But we've had a back and forth discussion about this with some of the people over here at City Hall, and I think we've gotten most of what our city would like to have in there already in it. Yes, John?
John, this sounds like the kind of thing I would easily vote on, but I don't, I haven't seen it.
Well, you haven't seen the easements?
No, it's not in our ballot. I would encourage us maybe, if we, if it's not that urgent, if perhaps we could get it in our next packet so we can actually review it.
Actually, it is urgent, and I'd be happy to step out if you want to move on to anything else, copy these and circulate to them. It's a simp, it's only one page.
Why is it so urgent?
We've been actually trying to catch them up on something that they say they needed last month. They didn't send it to us till late in the month, and they weren't familiar exactly with our schedule as far as councils, and I told them, couldn't be on our agenda until there was a sufficient notice, plus we weren't going to agree to what they sent us originally. So it's been back and forth with Becca and myself about six times to get what you have. I'm sorry, I really thought it was in your package tonight.
One, one page, John?
Yeah, it's just one page.
Yeah.
The back page is just acknowledgements.
Okay, so someone could assist John in copying that, and then we'll, we'll table this and move on.
Sorry, I'll get back.
And come back with that. Thanks. Okay. Then counsel, we'll move on to accepting our services agreement with Pat Callahan, municipal associates from our September 17th special council meeting. We did recommend retaining Pat Callahan for the city administrator search. He has been contacted, Doug, and we have received his agreement. Hope everyone received a copy of that. Doug did send that. So we'd entertain a motion to accept the agreement.
I would move to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen? Seconded by Hallie? Any discussion? Now please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Ledger Kalin?
Yes.
Yes.
Revelensky?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Doug, can I call on you to talk a little bit about timeline?
Okay, there was a little question about that.
Yeah.
In the professional services agreement, he refers to Exhibit A, which has a tentative timeline in there starting in September, which, I haven't talked to him specifically about this, but he was anticipating a sooner, earlier date for us to make a decision, so this timeline was designed to meet an earlier decision date by the council. In the memo that he also sent to us, he has, I don't know if you can find it here, revised timeline.
It's on page, it's page two, I believe, is what he was talking about, standard service agreement. There is an enclosed copy of the standard service agreement. This two-page agreement makes reference to Exhibit A, which is our proposal for services, which was previously provided to the mayor and council. If you have any questions or want to modify this agreement, please contact.
I can't find it in my notes here.
He wants a meeting with the mayor and city council to start preliminary planning.
Starting next week.
During the week, September 29th to October 2nd.
Right. And he has a, if I remember correctly, an expanded due date, they can offer sometime in December.
Yeah, he wants to interview, formal interviews, is Saturday in December. But he, yeah, he needs to know one off nights.
So is he looking for one by one meetings, or he wants to meet with the council as a whole?
He wants to meet with the mayor and city council first.
Individually.
And then he wants, then he wants one-on-one after that.
Oh, okay.
Oh, first we're all together, then one-on-one.
With the mayor and city council members and department heads.
I would imagine the first meeting is to get a
So we'll start scheduling that.
And that'll be first part of October.
Right.
And one of the things that I think we're, we're going to have to determine also, to be fair to him to get started, for instance, he will be at the League of Cities meeting later this week, and we haven't set a salary for the position. So I think that we probably need to do that before our next meeting in October, so we may be calling a special meeting early next week to discuss that.
Well, can we just discuss it at the time when we meet with him? I mean, an official I mean, at an official council meeting?
He's got three questions that he really needs answered right away.
Sure.
Before he even starts.
Is it how much we're paying one of them?
Of course.
Yes.
But we need a special meeting aside from everything else, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, I would think, I think we do.
All right.
I think we do, John, because, you know, he's going to get started with putting together the document and all that, I think.
And he wants to set up a calendar, so we can have open dates, so that everybody can be at a meeting, for instance, in November or December, that sort of thing. So, you know, he wants the full council engaged, and so we need to set up some timelines and some dates.
I think it'd be good to have that before he meets with the council.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So we'll discuss a special meeting and get back to everyone tomorrow.
I'm going at the next council meeting.
You are.
I am.
Let's see, Doug, anything else?
I think that's it for right now.
Okay. All right, so we will expect then, we'll have a special council meeting to discuss salary for the position, and then we'll also be calling a meeting with Pat. Possibly, we can link them, do that portion early, and then have a meeting with him, so we can discuss that, too. Okay. We did vote, or we got a vote on that. All right, very good. All right, so John is still copying. Will, his city attorney report would be next. So I think what I'll call right now is for the Recreation Facilities Task Force to give us an update. Jane?
Come on, Vanna. Vanna.
Very good.
Jane McMahon. So what we have here is an update of the gymnasium, but we'll get to that in just a moment, if you can bear with me. We had a meeting on September seventeenth with the task force, with Newman Munson. Carly, Newman Munson is the gymnasium architect. Carly Nelson is our construction manager, and a representative from a flooring company, just to discuss, you know, types of flooring. And we had ten task force members, plus several representatives from Park and Rec, including and the city. So Michael was there for the city. And the point I'm making there is there were a couple of decisions that we, you know, talked about, and we had a very good, broad range of people that were there. So kind of going back now to the fundraising aspect, as you know, we've been given a, been awarded a million dollars from the community attractions and tourism states funding, you know, for that grant. It is contingent upon that date that it begins is August thirteenth. We had sixty days to complete our funding, which was two hundred and forty thousand dollars. To date, we have raised, to September seventeenth, we had raised one hundred and seventy-four thousand, leaving sixty-six thousand to be raised by October thirteenth. Our date lands on the eleventh, and Nicole gave us till the thirteenth to actually have our paperwork to her. So we're looking to, you know, complete that fundraising. The pool aspect has moved along, and we have a pool construction, general contracting company, which was Ricio, General Contracting. We have Cunningham Mechanical, which is for the concession and bathroom. And they are moving dirt, you know, digging and so forth. Some of that dirt will be used. They're predicting five thousand cubic yards, thank you, cubic yards of dirt that would be at the pool area to be transferred over to the gymnasium. They think they need about four thousand at the gym. Any remainder will go over to Carly Nelson. So there's a little bit of cost savings there. And Melanie will correct me if I mention any, am I good so far? Okay. So then, so we move from that, the sewer, the, it's a sewer drainage.
Storm sewer.
The storm sewer. That was placed, all of that was placed at the same time. So in other words, the pool is moving forward. We've broken ground, where, you know, we've got the contractors ready, they're, you know, they're moving dirt. The meeting that we had was really to discuss the gymnasium now, because when we had to stop the process, you know, when we were unsure if we were getting the CAT dollars, and we didn't know if we should move forward, we put everything on hold, and that's put the architects on hold for the gymnasium. So now we're starting that back up again, and their process is to go from schematic drawings to the, sorry, I want to make sure I get it right, the design development phase, which would be more detailed drawings, construction bidding, and then final projection. What I'm here to ask today is to go through this drawing and to see if we can get approval to move from schematic drawing to the design development. The things that they, Dave Zradnik, who is from Newman Munson, the things that we have requested of him, and also required from the state, now that it's a state grant, we will, you know, we have to go through state code, we have to be audited that way. So toilets have been a huge issue, and it's the count. And so whatever your activities are, they have to count. And they're still, they're going to even meet tomorrow, or, you know, have a phone conference. But on this drawing, and I'm sorry it's not bigger, but one of the issues that you'll see is that we had to add, we have a family restroom, so this is out in the lobby, and I'll come back over to all of you, but I want you to note the restrooms, enlarging the restrooms here for the count for the gymnasium, as well as just note the office space is here, that we're repurposing the offices that were over on that side. So like you say, toilets, offices here, a bigger reception area. Not much has changed in the way, you know, down at the gymnasium, but the request, though, the change dollar-wise is here, and I'll talk a little bit more about structure, but just for you to see where those are. So restrooms, again, here is the old pool entrance, you know, that's the pool entrance now, we just have to bump those, that lavatory up. So it's just right in here, with office space right where the pool is prior to that. So with that in mind, that is...
Can we show the camera?
Oh. Do you think it'll show up?
Can it show up?
You can add it in post-production.
Add it.
Still add it. These are whiz.
So that was, you know, one of the issues, and we're getting close. The reason why I have to bring that up is because there's extra dollars associated with that. And at that meeting, Chris Smith from Carly Nelson is, this is a guesstimate, this is, we're standing around talking, but he's throwing out, you know, approximately sixty thousand that would be added by expanding that bathroom, you know, which, in the grand scheme of things, the way things have been going back and forth, we are doing some savings on the pool side, you know, bringing that dollar amount down for the overall project. So that was one. We decided not to do a dedicated concession stand inside, there will be one outside by the outdoor pool, but for tournaments and so forth, they can just pull out tables or, you know, use counter space there. Offices, I showed you, we're just repurposing some of the offices that are over by the swimming pool, but those would be for Derek and his staff. You know, there's three offices over there, that's nothing that gets added, you know, so far, just the lavatory is the addition. The other point that we covered was the flooring. And they need to know flooring before they go into the next level, because a wood floor versus the synthetic causes my concrete to be at a different level. So if I were doing wood floors, that's going to be, and I had two wood courts versus, and one synthetic, my subflooring is going to be at two different levels. So we talked about this, and Park and Rec actually would like to be able to do lots of activities, and really, the multipurpose, the synthetic flooring on those courts is, we all felt, and it was unanimous with this large group of people that we go to, that we recommend to you to do all three courts, the synthetic flooring.
And long-term maintenance is an issue, too, with wood floors, where you get to the point where you have to finish those, refinish those, it's a huge expense. And this is a recreational facility, not, you know, a high school gymnasium, so I don't see what...
And the flooring, the floorings that they have now, so I can pass these around, you know, I'm not the best to be able to tell you what the difference. You'll see that there's, you know, there's a ninety, a sixty, a one-ten, you know, just different feel. And I guess it comes down to, in my mind, there's what's called a coefficient of friction, and so a wood floor has a certain coefficient, and they now have synthetic floors that have the same coefficient. So I want to be able to slide some, and we're talking, we're talking, your knees, your hips, your, you know, that sort of thing. So you want, you want to be able to have a surface that slides some, but not so much that you, you know, are skidding over there. So I think that there are, you know, that's the next research that we would have to do, similar end price. We did, we did kind of nix this one flooring, this red flooring that I have in my hand. They had budgeted for the track to be this particular surface, which collegiate competition tracks would have, and it's way more expensive than what we feel we need, because we don't think we'll hold competitions. I mean, it's not, you know, it's, the size of the track really isn't conducive to that in high school. Jeff Courtwright was there at this meeting, and he said, you know, they're not really interested in having an indoor track meet. So this could potentially save us, you know, you hate to drop numbers, but, you know, he was, you know, the flooring guy's like, you know, you'll save thirty thousand, but I don't know. I don't know if that's true, but there would be a cost savings to taking, this was in our bid option, and to come down to a different surface. So that was more about kind of cost savings, cost savings here. My final point, and sorry to be long-winded, is the other topic that requires additional dollars was on these courts, each court currently in the budget has two hoops, you know, a hoop at each end. And the basketball group, the basketball world, would like to have drop-down nets at half-court, so that if they're practicing, they would potentially have four baskets per court. They did agree that, you know, we were just talking about two courts doing that. The third court is already scheduled to have a drop-down baseball batting cage. So that would be the first, the first court. The next two courts would have these additional drop-down nets. With, that total is approximately thirty-six thousand, including, because we have to beef up the ceiling, as well as the mechanical baskets. So I give that number, but at the same time, I had a phone call right before I came, about a half an hour before I came, and we currently have a donor who is interested in donating eighteen thousand dollars, which would cover the mechanical drop-down nets. So we still have to beef up, there's an eighteen thousand to beef up the ceiling, and an eighteen thousand for the drop-down nets. So that was kind of an exciting phone call, I thought. But this goes back to, what I'm asking tonight is...
Jane, do we have a, do we have a choice on the restrooms? I don't, I didn't think we had a choice, I thought that was based on code.
It's based on code.
So, yeah, so the only choice you're asking really is for the flooring. The other thing, too, is we don't have, we don't have final numbers on this, obviously. We know we've saved a hundred thousand dollars from our pool bid, hopefully that balances everything out. But are there any other anticipated additional costs based on the meeting that you just had?
No, it was just the drop-down basketball nets were the addition.
Okay.
We did, just to throw this out there, too, that we did talk about the lobby flooring and the folks working at Park and Rec, and most people, I mean, it was unanimous also that the lobby be made of some kind of non-slep synthetic service. So that was a question, I think, that we had before, so.
Okay.
All right.
And we're really just getting started in this whole process, so we don't know whether there's going to be some, there may be other opportunities to value engineer the building so that you're compensating for the things that you absolutely need. But I would say, you know, if a recommendation's coming from the task force for the synthetic floor, then I would think that's all the council would need, but if anybody feels strongly about wood floors, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Well, another reason that we went with the synthetic, thought that was a smarter choice, is the long-term care. It's much easier to resurface the top layer of the synthetic rather than constantly redoing the wood floors, so the ongoing cost, there's savings that way. It might cost a little bit more square footage for the synthetic installation, or about the close?
It was, they were...
Pretty close.
Eight?
Eight and seven.
Were they really throwing out like a three dollars?
Yeah, it was pretty close.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was something very similar, they thought, than the products, you know, out there these days that you can get, price-wise, for what you want.
And then one thought with the track was to use the thicker synthetic for the track, just to give a little more cushion.
Yes.
And that's still less than the collegiate.
Right. Right. I mean, this one was, and really, they said that, you know, as far as impact, that it's, this wasn't, this wasn't any better for the impact. So I think that, we still have our work to do there, as far as picking flooring, but I think now we're more focused on the pure synthetic, and the value of being able to do so many different activities. I'll just throw a little side note out there that there was a, well, maybe not. It's just a story about an organization utilizing, they used a university wood floor, you know, for an event over the weekend, and just completely got destroyed. So, but, so I think that, you know, we're, that's where we land there. But my question to you today, from Newman Munson, is may they move from the schematic drawing phase? Can we accept the schematic drawing and move into the design development phase?
Well, with your phone call for eighteen thousand, I think we're pretty confident we're going to meet our objective for the fundraising, so I think that's really our only consideration. We want the project to move forward as quickly as possible. We're confident that we're going to meet that requirement for CAT, then I would say yes, we probably would, so.
All right, good.
But let's, we'll accept a motion on that, so two separate motions. One would be to allow for Newman Munson or Design Ar... One would be to allow for Newman Munson or Design Art Tech to move forward with the design process, and we'll take that one first, and then we'll take a motion on the other three elements that were mentioned, the bathroom expansion, synthetic flooring, and the overhead baskets. So entertain a motion to approve the continuation of the design process.
I move to continue.
Okay. Moved by Ledger Kaelin.
Design process.
Second. Second by Hammers. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. And then the next motion will be to approve the expansion of the bathrooms, the decision for synthetic flooring, and also the overhead operational and additional baskets.
Move to approve.
Moved by Hallie to approve.
Second.
Second by Ledger Kaelin. Discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Jane, one last question. What is it that we actually have to submit before October 13th or 12th to, to show that we have fulfilled that?
I'm not exactly sure.
Why don't we check on that?
So I will check on...
Probably have to have pledge forms that are copied or something that, yeah, okay.
So I will find out with those, so have we signed, has the city signed then the agreement for the CAT grant?
Uh, no. So John, that's, you have the copy of that, correct?
I do have it.
Right. So I guess that's probably something we'll need to submit with.
At some point, I think once that's signed, they then give us another, you know, like instructions of a form that we're supposed to fill out, because I actually researched it at one point, I tried to find it. And it seems to me that once that gets signed, then they come back to us and say, okay, we need this kind of documentation.
Okay. So John, can we maybe have that at our next, at our special meeting next week, so we can get that going too? Great. All right, thank you, Jane. Okay, John, I'll call you back to distribute the easement document.
I've given you the easement forms, which are four. They're the first and only page of the easement. Every one of them has a back page that has a signature line for the mayor and for the city clerk, and then a separate part of it after the notarial acknowledgement for the signature of interstate power and light. While I was out being assisted in getting some copies of this, a couple came up and indicated that they were requested to have a private property easement, similar to what we're considering, and that theirs covered a distance of 16 feet of overhang, is that correct?
Eight feet of property and eight overhang.
Okay, because that is different, what we're considering. Is there anybody else here that's had a private property issue with an easement, similar to what we're talking about? This isn't a time for a public hearing on it, but the action item that we have was put on here because of what the power company indicated was an urgency, trying to stay in compliance with the National Electrical Safety Code. And essentially, our easements are each for eight feet, and the representation to me, as the city's representative, has been that these would be perpendicular extensions for different kinds of equipment, transformers, conductors, and so forth, that would, in most instances, not extend more than six feet from a pole, and that the eight-foot wide easement that each of these provides would be more than adequate for that purpose. So I'm informed that there's been a request on private property for the equivalent of a 16-foot easement. I don't think it's the same thing, frankly, but I certainly appreciate your concern. That's different than what was represented. So, Melanie, you haven't had anything?
I have had one.
You've had one contact?
Yeah.
And were they similarly someone in a private property situation who was asked for 16 feet?
I didn't get a feet, it was a private property, and they were asked for an additional pole on their private easement.
They aren't all the same as what we're looking at.
And John, these are specific to what's listed on our agenda, the, those four, those four areas.
Yeah, and we don't really have any jurisdiction over the private property situation.
Exactly, these are just addressed to the city property at this point, in those specific areas. Public restroom, parking lot north of the public restroom, City Hall, and Carnegie Museum.
Right, one of these private sites is directly next door to one of your city sites, right behind the building here.
So is there a connection to their property?
I haven't seen their easements, and I don't know that, what the city grants as far as eight feet of easement width necessarily is what the power company went out to any other private individual for. So I have to apologize to you, sir, we don't know what you've got. I just know that my negotiation back and forth on this concerning the eight feet, the eight-foot width was never, ever something we questioned, based on the explanation that about six feet of pole perpendicular width would be used. So if there's other people that are having an experience next to our sites that are totally different than that, we haven't been informed of any of that as far as the representative of the power company.
Lori, you have any knowledge on this?
Thankfully, I'm here with them all night.
Can certainly give their feedback.
No, but I can check with our, who are you working, are you working with, something in our real estate private?
JCG, actually, J, Henry.
So, yeah, I guess we're just looking for consistency in something that we can explain to some of the folks that have, that are being asked privately, yeah.
Every one of these easements is consistent with what was represented initially, and the eight-foot width wouldn't be out of what we've usually talked about. We actually did some overhang easement up on our alley going north to the courthouse with things that stuck out partly to the pole and partly off the side of buildings with Paul Glossop before Ragbri. And of course, it's a totally commercial neighborhood, we didn't have any, any problems with that, and I believe that one probably could be referenced as far as one that, it points was probably out over the alleyway, four to six feet at a couple of points. So these are things that do exist in our commercial areas along our trunk line that goes east to west in town right now, but as far as how it affects private property, I honestly, I don't know what's being asked of private individuals, so.
Okay, well, I think tonight we can only take up what...
Right, what's on our agenda.
So John, are you satisfied we have enough information?
Yeah, I do, is there anything in here that we should be concerned about, John?
Now, as I pointed out to, each of the grant or provisions on the front page has some additional language added that was discussed with our planning office and back and forth with the utility company, and they agreed to put in the accepts in each provision as far as either prior notice or prior written approval, or with a review by our park and rec or our public works. So I don't see the city exposed as far as there being something that if we thought it was amiss, we wouldn't have a way to come back and say, wait a minute, you're not turning these pyramidal trees into bushes and so forth, if it comes up like that again. But as far as the locations, I don't think we're going to have that kind of problem.
Although we do have new plantings behind, in the parking lot, behind the restrooms.
This is true, yeah.
I don't know whether they're in the easement.
I don't think they're in a position where they can interfere with us, but I guess...
I think they just, I think they do go along the alley, so probably not.
Yeah.
So I'd move for approval of the easement, and $4 that we're going to gain from this, I would move that it be split among our staff in the form of donuts.
We'll scratch that from the motion, except the early part of the motion.
All right. Let me make a suggestion. Are you willing to, maybe look into a little bit?
Yeah, I think...
All right, well, if you'll authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign these, based on the action item on our agenda, maybe we could make some calls in the morning too, to see if there is something else going on that's totally different or contradictory to what we've been told, but I don't think that's the case.
Then I'll amend my motion somewhat, so amended.
Okay, moved by, moved by Brevolinski.
Second.
Second by Hammers. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Brevolinski?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hadley?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Thank you, John, so you can go ahead and continue with your city attorney report. We got to take, everything else taken in care of in between.
Sure, you can buy the donuts any.
It's got to go in the budget, it's not in the budget.
Four dollars, you get four, a dollar for each one.
It's not budgeted yet, it's budgeted for next year, it's next year's donuts.
I'm, yeah, I'd gladly get you Tuesday for a hamburger today.
Wimpy. Okay, John, go ahead.
Okay, the old Nelson Nursing Home, I think probably all you saw a story in the newspaper middle of last week, that the partnered owners on that property are considering raising the building on the site. And that was after we had hearings for months about a potential reuse of the property and a rezone of the property to R3. At this point, I've left phone messages in Howell's direction and in Mr. Cooster's direction, asking that they give me something more to go on than what I read in the newspaper. I haven't had a response. If some of you that are here tonight communicated... Okay, but my opinion is still, as I briefly mentioned at the last meeting, we had basically Media Center or FPAC coverage then, at the time of the public hearing on it. We don't have what I'd like to see in our minutes, I guess, as far as the compromise that we reached, but there is abundant recorded record of the hearing, we had more than once, that talked about what the neighbors hoped would be the compromise, which was as few as 12 to 14 units. I think I'm right on that. If there was going to be something, that it'd be a much smaller amount of units than the original 20 to 24 that was started.
But the point was, if they didn't go forward, it would revert back to an R2 from an R3.
Right.
So at what point?
It was already, yeah, it would have been an R2 with a permitted use if it hadn't gone to this expansion into apartments.
So at what point legally do we, can we just go back and essentially change the ordinance to read R2?
Well, if they, if they tear it down, it will no longer be sitting there as a vacant nursing home. Right now, it's still sitting there as the permitted use that it always was since the 1980s.
Right.
If they tear it down, then it does revert.
It reverts to R2, and then anyone else who has any designs on the property will have to go through the process again to have zoning changed if they're pursuing something like that.
I've had some calls, there's a rumor going around that there may be storage units or something put on the site. That would look like a B2.
That's a B, yeah.
Use, that would require a rezoning application, and it's not in the list of...
Yeah, certainly not.
...permitted uses, special uses, or conditional uses, so.
Well, John, if you feel we're in good standing to do that, then I think that...
I believe we are, and I believe...
We'll just make note of that when the demolition takes place, and...
There was some concern about what our understandings were after the compromise was reached. It all was dependent on the use that...
Sure.
...we were caused to believe might occur. Since that didn't happen, it stays the way it was.
Okay, very good. And however, we need to do that through our legislation, if there is anything, let us know, or we just simply...
I don't think we do anything more right now, the way it sounds.
Because we do have an ordinance that, that says it's an R3 zoning right now.
Yeah, basically, I don't see Scott here, but if they were going to demolish it, they'd come in, get a demolition permit, there would be more conversation taking place with that.
We just, I just want to make sure that we, you know, we follow through with that process, so if there's something at our, you know, the meeting following the demolition, where we have by resolution support what we had intended, and we have record of that, we're going to need some record of it. Okay, thanks.
Now, next, next item is talking about crisis home. And I'll give you each pair of letters.
Again, the address of this property on East Burlington is, do we have that in here?
It's the 804 East Burlington.
804.
Okay, what I provided you is a copy of a letter September 11th, we received from the Jones Law Firm, an attorney named Gary Jones, at Cedar Falls, Iowa, who is a fair housing act specialist who is retained by Tenco Industries. And I've done a little background on Mr. Jones, and he is a specialist in this particular area of the law, both in federal court and state court, he's had experience, and he's also a former city attorney, was a city attorney up in the Cedar Falls area, that town, another smaller community in the past. Essentially, I returned a response to his letter on the 22nd, and let me bring you up also on what happened after we had a discussion of this previously. Council directed me to communicate with Mr. Ben Wright, who's the director of the Tenco Industries in Atumla, that we expected Tenco to comply with our zoning ordinance as far as going through the steps required to obtain a permit, or seek to obtain a permit as far as coming in, making an application, asking for an interpretation from our Board of Adjustment as to what they are or aren't, and what they can do or can't do. And so I expressed that, again, as clearly as I could, to Mr. Jones in response to his letter, which basically said he wasn't really sure that Tenco needed to do anything. I took exception to that, and the letter's fairly strongly worded about that. Since then, I've had two or three conversations with Mr. Jones, and Mr. Wright has communicated with our City Hall and has requested that he be sent the Board of Adjustment application form, which requests, and we haven't got this back from Tenco yet, but which requests as one of the things on the form and interpretation as to status. And then it also has an area for consideration of variance, and consideration of conditions, and additional comments. And once that's back, the process that was spelled out to him in a separate letter by Rebecca Loper in our planning department, is that it will be circulated to the people in the neighborhood in a perimeter around the site. It'll also be something that's published in the media, so that there's awareness of when the Board of Adjustment hearing is to take place. And it's an open hearing, in other words, you can come before the Board of Adjustment and express your sentiments. It's also a situation where other persons can chime in. I would expect Mr. Jones may come to that hearing on behalf of Tenco and explain certain things. I've done, I did some research before I talked to you the other evening. I've done some more research, I have a U.S. Code Service in my office that fills a good part of my hallway, it's where I call my best insulation exists. It's where I call my best insulation exists. Books aren't worth anything anymore, but they make good insulation. And so I pulled some of those, and there are thousands of cases under the Fair Housing Act. There are hundreds of cases since the Fair Housing Act was updated to take into consideration things that had to do with the Americans with Disability Act, which started about 10 years earlier and then got upgraded again, so that some of the language of the ADA was added to the Fair Housing Act again in 1999 to make it stronger in those areas that required accommodation for different physical and mental conditions under ADA. So a lot of those cases have just hatched in the last 15 years, basically, but there's a whole body of law about those, too. So I can tell you, first of all, what's going on in this situation, one of the criteria that takes a case into federal jurisdiction is that we've already taken a state action that is alleged to be discriminatory or in some way improper under federal laws. We haven't. It's not ripe. We haven't had our chance to act. It's called exhaustion remedies, and the Board of Adjustment is our local remedy. So at that point, the Board of Adjustment, as long as it's focused on what's reasonable, can act fairly under the Fair Housing Act. But it has to take into consideration things that in other case law and under the concept of accommodation still count. Things like safety concerns, security concerns, concerns about whether there are risks posed as far as traffic, busy street. I've already talked with the, both Mr. Jones, the attorney, and Mr. Wright about things that have been expressed, concerns about what if somebody comes out the front of the house, comes down the levels of steps, and steps three feet off our narrow parking there right into Burlington Street at any of the busy times of the day that exist on Burlington Street. Whose problem is that? Well, it's partly their problem. They were gonna have somebody from Tenco Industries take a look at the place as far as possibly gating and things like that that would make it less likely somebody could do that. Things about the facility as far as a person walking away and things like that fit safety and security. And then there's just the overall functionality of the grounds as far as what a Board of Adjustment would more traditionally look at. The things that are in the federal cases that the Board of Adjustment is supposed to make accommodations about is if in every other respect you can meet this concern with conditions on the use without saying you can't use it, you have to look the other way on things like the setback requirements or side yard requirements and so forth. And that's been drilled into towns and villages in a lot of these federal cases over the last several years, at least the last 10 years. I've got some cases, there's a town of Taylor that was fined $285,000 plus a $20,000 additional penalty for each year it didn't revise its ordinances to facilitate and accommodate under the provisions of the Fair Housing Act. The $284,000 was a judgment under basically a form of hybrid civil rights violation of this act for what the federal judge said, the jury concluded, was a quote "not in my backyard" attitude demonstrated by the town and its administrative board because of political pressure. So nobody can promise you that political pressure is going to mean anything to Fair and impartial Board of Adjustment. And the Board of Adjustment is separated from our group in here politically, and they are to be the same adjudicator of fact in the capacity that a district court judge would be in our state court, and they are to be the same kind of adjudicator of fact that weighs things impartially without being pressured by the politics that come up every time we have a public hearing in this room. So this thing is born out, the Fair Housing Act is born out of the first 25 years of its existence from the Civil Rights Act back in the 60s. The first 25 years of cases are mostly about racial discrimination, and there are some very harsh verdicts and federal court decisions in that area. ADA was just a flowering concept in the late 70s when some of the really hardline cases were coming out of the racial discrimination situation. So now we have another kind of discrimination standard to show that we aren't violating. At the same time, this case isn't ripe. We haven't had our chance to see how we do as far as considering all of the criteria. And this case isn't one where our town's done anything wrong. Fairfield is open-minded. We have other facilities in this community that are group homes for mentally challenged people, and we have a facility that's a workshop in this town that's been out there since the early 80s that is definitely working with their charges, and the community supports it in every way. So as far as pointing a finger at us and saying that we have some kind of bias or prejudice, that's not our status. This case isn't ripe yet. The Board of Adjustment will get this, they're gonna take at least a couple weeks' notice. They, they're supposed to do it within 10 to 20 days. With publication, that means two to three weeks. And we haven't got the request back yet from Tenco. I expect they'll meet with their attorney. We'll get something that's got all kinds of suggestions in it as far as what they should be interpreted and classified as, and some things about what they look at as far as conditions. But I'm second guessing their lawyer, and I'm telling you, that's the state of things right now, so.
Thanks, John.
As much as I can update.
Okay, good. Yeah, appreciate that. And we appreciate your efforts after the first letter to get them to come to the table and say that they will go through our process.
They're planning on coming to the table, is my understanding.
Yeah, that's great. Really appreciate that. All right, thank you. Next, we'll move to Water and Sewer Utilities Report.
Our committee met about a week ago. I can't recall the specific date at this time, but we had two, two people come to our meeting requesting reduction in their bills due to use of water that did not go through the sewer. Catherine, Kathleen Williams and Demetrius Katalakos presented their cases to us. In the situation of Kathleen Williams, it was authorized by the committee to refund credit to her account, $114.89, which was the sewer usage minus her usual and customary monthly sewer charge. With Mr. Katalakos, the committee voted to reduce and credit to his account $456.58, which was the sewer usage above his normal and usual customary amount. And we have directed Tina to make those changes on those accounts. At that meeting, we also took up the matter of municipal charges for water for our three municipalities that purchased water from the city of Fairfield. They were included in our recent 12% increase that was given to water users across the board. It was pointed to us by the city of Libertyville's attorney that we have an agreement that was established in 1972 that has some very specific guidelines within it on how increases are to be imposed on their municipality, which is similar to the agreements that we have with the other two cities, Lockridge and Birmingham. We had also reviewed the report from the rate study from McClure Engineering to find out if they had included in what we were doing for our upgrades in this city in with the increases that we were proposing for here. We found that, one, we were not charging those cities the double existing rate for users across the board, which means if we had, we had a dollar fifty per cubic foot charge for water, they would be paying three dollars per cubic foot for water. We have not been charging that for several years. Again, these agreements were reached back in 1972. They were long-term agreements, 60 years in duration. It was, it was further discussed by the committee as to whether to leave and place that 12% increase, or if we should follow the recommendations from the rate study that was performed. And the committee voted to recommend that we change that increase to those municipalities to 5% rather than 12%, and that for the months that they have paid the 12% increase that we credit back to their accounts, the difference between the 12% and 5%. And I would like to ask for approval of that resolution to, by the council.
We motion to approve that new policy regarding the, the other municipalities that we are providing water to. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hammers. Any discussion?
I have a question. Maybe you said this, but I didn't quite catch it. So what's the rationale for it again? Just say real short. Real short.
Real short. Rationale for this is that we approved a rate increase back for the 1st of July that was 12% across the board.
Across the board.
Across the board, which means all users of water, whether they are within the city limits or outside the city limits as purchasers. The municipalities have a separate agreement that was established back in 1972, different from how that resolution worked for the increase in this particular case.
And so that limited to 5%?
No, it didn't. It didn't limit it to charging 5%. We could have went ahead and charged the 12%, but the agreement says specifically that you have to have a demonstratable upgrade for their systems. And a portion of the increase that we are putting on is not just for improvements to the system here in Fairfield, but it's also to improvements at the plant. And so the committee felt since we are doing something to upgrade the quality of water that these municipalities get, they should be at least subject to a portion of that increase that's being imposed on the residents of the city of Fairfield, because our water is produced in the same way their water is produced. But putting in a new water main on Kirkwood
Okay.
does not directly impact what they receive.
So seven twelfths of the, we're saying, seven twelfths of that, of that rate increase is going for our infrastructure, our water mains.
Correct.
Local water mains, and they're not getting that improvement there? They have, they gotta maintain their own water mains?
They do. From, from their taps that come from our system, the example best is Libertyville. Their tap to our system is out by Jefferson County Park in, in that general vicinity. And from there, all the way to the city of Libertyville.
They manage it themselves.
Anything inside the city of Libertyville, they manage, maintain, and upgrade as needed.
Okay, I understand now. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Now please call the roll.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Hammers.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Brassmussen.
Yes.
Hadley.
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin.
Yes.
Brevelinski.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is that everything there?
That's my report. Thank you very much.
Next, Ways and Means.
We had a meeting this afternoon, or this, early this evening, with the City Safety Committee. That's not our Council Public Safety Committee, but the Safety Committee that's made up of department heads and representatives from each department. Safety Committee entered into an agreement with a company called S, some Professional Safety Solutions, to upgrade safety guidelines for each department. And they were requesting a reimbursement or that, these, these charges which were already incurred for services that they agreed on before they asked the committee, they asked us to try to fund out of local option sales. We actually, after extended discussion, and we definitely support the department's desire for, you know, being in compliance with OSHA, especially in light of the, you know, safety issues that had come up in the past year with the tragedy that happened at Water Works. But what we did was we had actually tabled the request until we could see if we could actually renegotiate the amount that's due, and also to consider, you know, which departments had the effect on each of the different departments. So we'll bring this up at a later time. The other thing that was brought to our attention was municipal financial management policies of city of Burlington, which Jessica brought up to us to consider establishing similar policies for the city of Fairfield. And we tabled that as well. We wanna look and see, you know, how, you know, what current policies we have in place, and then from there, look at that later. So that was our meeting at 6 o'clock, and that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
Blue Zones project is coming along nicely. There are six areas of buy-in required to become Blue Zones Community Grocery Stores. We've reached that threshold. Restaurants, we've reached that one. Community policy, that's done. And the three areas we're still working on, schools, it's coming along nicely, employers, we've got six out of 10, so that's coming along. And the final one is citizen engagement. And the form that they like to see that in is these personal pledges, basically saying that you'll do something healthy, or you are doing something healthy. We're very close. I think we're within 100 or 99 left to go. So just wanted to encourage the public, anybody who wants to support this project who hasn't already made a pledge, you can do so at bluzones, with an S, project.com. Look up Fairfield and make sure it's, it's included in our community. Or you can see Mayor Ed Malloy for a paper copy. He and I are kind of in a, a bit of a friendly competition. I think he needs them more than I do.
It's like you have more friends.
Well, I didn't say that. So it's a very simple process and painless.
Michael, is this, we initially, when we first started toying with Blue Zones, there was a pledge that people signed.
Yeah.
If they signed that, is that something different than this pledge?
That is, that was phase one, and we did very well with that. We were really competitive. And then the powers that be decided to break up the towns within bigger communities, over 10,000 and smaller. We were lumped in smaller because we're not quite 10, 10,000 in population, and so we were put on the back burner. And then we started over. So if you did it in years past, that doesn't count, so you need to do it again.
So if you can't remember if you've done it again, just do it.
Just do it again.
Just do it again.
And if you've done it already for this round, and you do it again, there's no harm, no foul. It just won't count. But, you know, it's a good thing to do, because we're maybe within a month or two of finishing this project. On another note, I had a meeting today with the, the Iowa, University of Iowa community was at the Public Health Division. They formed a group that I joined in 2012, kind of a business leadership network. And they've had these conferences, these health and wellness conferences around the state. We're planning one here. I think it's October 24th is the date. And one of the topics will be what's next, you know? What's life after Blue Zones gonna look like for our Wellness Committee? So before Blue Zones, we had the Jefferson County Wellness Action Committee and Let's Go Jeffco. So before Blue Zones, we had the Jefferson County Wellness Action Committee and Let's[1435.92][1435.92]Go Jeffco, and that got us a certain point. Then we, we jumped on the Blue Zones bandwagon, and now we're kind of winding down on that. So we're looking at what's next, what our priorities going to be. And so I encourage everyone to attend when I have a specific date. I believe it's October 24th. Put more on that later.
Okay, great. Thanks, Michael. And there are only three cities in Iowa that have completed their Blue Zone requirements. I think two of them are the large cities, and there's only one small city. We would be the fourth, and we are, as I say, we are on track, so we hopefully will[1470.42][1470.42]get that done before the end of the year. Great. Thank you very much. Melanie, you have a project update for us?
How fast do you want to get out of here? Michael, question on the Blue Zones. Now, if you live in the county but work in Fairfield, you can still sign up, and that[1491.88][1491.88]counts towards the goal, correct?
Correct. If your zip code is 52556 or 52557, you're good to go.
Okay. Project update. I'll just go through that list. There's a few that I want to point out to you because there's a lot of earth getting[1509.26][1509.26]moved right now. But as far as the sanitary sewer step one project, the archaeologist was here this[1517.26][1517.26]week. It'll still be a couple months before the whole step one gets cleared, but we are one[1525.74][1525.74]step closer to getting that project under construction. On step two, you will be seeing the soil boring company out over the next couple weeks, three weeks, starting next Monday. And I'll be contacting the landowners that that affects. But again, that is GeoTechnics out of Burlington who will be doing the soil boreings on step[1547.83][1547.83]two. And just as a reminder, the step two is the, the country club, forest park area, and[1555.58][1555.58]then from Lambs and Woods up to campus along Crow Creek. Also to point out, Jane gave a great update on the pool in the rec center. The skate park started moving dirt today, so they'll be in town for the next couple[1577.26][1577.26]weeks. They want recommendations on places to eat, so stop out there and see them. I said, well, we've got lots of those. On the community transformation grant, 12th and Burlington, that, the completion date[1591.61][1591.61]is this Friday, with all of the paperwork has to be turned in by the end of the month. We've given Jefferson County Public Health all of the paperwork so they can start submitting[1601.53][1601.53]it. We're waiting for all the work to just physically get done. The sidewalks at 12th and Burlington will be poured tomorrow, with opening it up should[1610.88][1610.88]happen Wednesday evening, so Thursday morning coffee should be good to go through that[1615.92][1615.92]intersection. And it still will be on flashing red through the end of the week. Dickinson, who is the, the person putting in the turn signals and the pedestrian lights, they'll be doing their work Thursday, Friday. So this, this, it'll be, the intersection will be opened at backup, it'll still be[1634.46][1634.46]on flashing red for the rest of the week. Frontage Road, the Frontage Road is complete. We're having a little issue with the seeding. It's been wet to get that complete, and Lori left. We were about ready to seed, or the contractors were about ready to seed, and a line came[1651.65][1651.65]through and tore up the nice finished ground. So we're having a little bit of issue getting that finished, but that is the last item[1659.00][1659.00]before that project will get accepted by the council. Hopefully, at the next council meeting, I'll present that to you for acceptance. On the facade project, Curtis Architecture has met with, I had 12 of them scheduled[1676.88][1676.88]through Friday, and we had a couple miscommunications with the property owners. So he's met with 10 building owners, a total of 15 properties. The next step, we have four more that are scheduled for Thursday, or I'm trying to[1689.50][1689.50]get them scheduled Thursday. The next step is for Rod with Curtis Architecture to create a budget based off of the wants[1697.33][1697.33]and the needs of the property owners, a realistic budget from perhaps what was submitted[1702.63][1702.63]with the grant. And then we bring that back to both the property owners and the city, determine whether we[1710.42][1710.42]need to reach out farther with the project or change the percent funded. We'll just have a more realistic idea than what was from what the application put together[1721.26][1721.26]based off of realistic discussions with the property owners. So that's all I have. I've got more items on here. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but those were the ones that[1732.88][1732.88]I just wanted to touch base with you on.
Great.
I'd like to add one thing to that. The current projects, I'll be attending a meeting on October 1st in Ankeny with the[1747.33][1747.33]Clean Water SRF funding. They're going to give us more direction on submittal of records and how to, how to keep[1758.33][1758.33]track of where the money's going and how it's working in the area of the projects that[1764.26][1764.26]we proposed in that clean water portion of our sewer project.
Great. Thanks, Aaron.
And I'll be attending that one there.
Oh, you will? Okay. Sure.
Thank you very much. Any other business for the council? Not entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Ledger Kaelin, second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.
Go Bears.
Jets.